All right, good afternoon, good evening, everybody. I want to welcome everyone to the April 28, 2014, School Board Meeting. I apologize, we're starting a little late. We, every year, the School Board meets with some of the students at the high school, and we have a sort of a give and take and pizza conversation. And we were so taken with our students, we spent more time talking with them and we lost track of the time. So, sorry to keep our other students waiting. We're going to start the meeting tonight with a spotlight for the Echo staff, for those watching at home.[44.17][44.17](APPLAUSE). We will applaud soon and often. The Echo staff is this high school newspaper, it is award-winning, it is led by Ms. Lori Keakley, and I'm going to turn this over to her to tell us all the details, those of us here and those of us watching at home.
Perfect. Thank you for having us. We're excited to be here. Just to give a little background, one of my favorite days, working with these guys, is not Distribution Day, it's not the day that all the state and national awards are handed out, it actually is the day before Thanksgiving break. It's a day where we stop, we have a potluck meal, and we hang out as a group. And we go around and we say what we're thankful for, and every year that we've done this, I've always said that I'm very thankful for them, both who they are as people and the dedication they show to the school and community. The theme of thanks is exactly why I'm here. I'm thankful to the board, superintendent, teachers, staff, parents, community, and of course, the students. There's no district that I would rather be working for than right here in St. Louis Park. Thanks to all of you for being available for photos and interviews. I know they ask a lot. And the parents at home, thank you for letting us have your students. Yes, they really are with me often until about 11:00, 11:30 PM, once every three to four weeks. We have late night as well tonight, if you want to come down and check out what's happening. We'll be here when you wrap up. I am thankful for this group, not only their accomplishments, but the dedication that they show. The students run it. I run around and ask a lot of questions. They make the decisions, they put both the print and online publications together. But you didn't invite us here for all of that. We'll do the award part. We'll start with the state of Minnesota. In the Minnesota High School Press Competition, the students won 11 awards, two firsts, two seconds, and several honorable mentions. Connor Wicklund was honored for a newspaper photo.[182.23][182.23](APPLAUSE). And Natalie Sanford was also an honorable mention. And those are just the people who are here tonight.
Natalie, we couldn't see, there, who are you?
In individual contests through either the National Scholastic Press Association or Columbia Scholastic Press Association, those are the two big national organizations. The students placed at every level. This is, these are two contests where there's one first, there's one second, there's one third, and up to two to four honorable mentions. We had representation of first, second, and third, and honorable mentions, all. And again, well, Cole was supposed to be here, but he's not. But Natalie and Connor won for photo, they both were honorable mentions in that, as well.[231.31][231.31](APPLAUSE). And they do more than just individual awards, they're also large group awards for the entire publication. This group's seniors, as well as the 2013 graduates, were awarded the school's fourth National Scholastic Press Association's Pacemaker finalist. There were 33 of these awarded nationally. But it doesn't stop there. Out of this, they take a section of that and make them national pacemakers, and this group won a national pacemaker this year, there were 24 of those given nationally. To be a pacemaker finalist is kind of the equivalent of winning state, and then if you win a national pacemaker, it's kind of like going against Iowa and then winning. So, I think it's a good thing.[280.13][280.13](APPLAUSE). We beat Iowa. I just randomly picked a state, I'm sorry. Additionally, the Columbia Scholastic Press Association is the other big one, and the students this year, the seniors from this year and the seniors from last year, were a silver crown, they're silver and gold, and there were 30 silvers nationally and 11 golds. So I think that's a big accomplishment as well.[304.83][304.83](APPLAUSE). We're not done yet. We also have, that was for the print edition, there's also a contest for the online editions, and the student news websites are judged during the current school year, which means this is the group who's in front of you now. For the first time in school history, the Echo won an online pacemaker finalist. There were 28 of these nationally.[327.72][327.72](APPLAUSE). As I tell these guys all the time, we don't do journalism for the awards. The students work to inform the student body and community, and you'll see them out during athletic events, school board meetings, and if they're not here, they're watching you at home, sorry. And this is their job, and they do it well. Thank you for honoring and supporting our program. We couldn't do it without your support, we couldn't do it without parental support, or the staff's support, or the student's support. This group means a lot to me, and the students, or, sorry, this means a lot to me. In fact, I get to know their parents well, too, and the parents often tell me how much they learn, not only about journalism, but life skills in doing this as well. So, I'm proud of what these guys do and how they work in their community. Every year, it's really hard for me, the end of the year, because I have to, I have to say goodbye to students I've had in some instances for four years, that are always very special to me. Please join me in thanking these guys for their dedication to the community and staff of St. Louis Park, and thanks for honoring us. I'm going to introduce our editors for this year, and we were going to bring up the plaques, but they were kind of kept locked in the cabinet today, so we didn't grab the key. So if you want to see both late night and the plaques that we actually want, although we have one here, because the online's here, by all means, stop by C275 and you can see them right outside, all right? So this is Gabe Bishino and Brenna Cook, and they are my print and then my online editors-in-chief this year.[435.31][435.31](APPLAUSE). You read the names.
I don't have a speech, so I'm just going to read the names for the members of the staff that are here, so I'll ask that you hold your applause to the end for the sake of time constraints. All right. Ladon Abdi.[455.93][455.93](LAUGHING). That's mine. That's yours, Brenna. Brenna Cook. Orietion. It's right there. Gilgrad. Malik Graze. Carter Green. Noah Grossman. Caroline Goodall. David Hope.[467.93][467.93](LAUGHING). Brita Hunnigs. Peter Johnson. Ivy Kaplan. Zoe Kudrowski. Lucas Kemph. John Kinney. Sue Kohler.[475.93][475.93](LAUGHING). Madison Lynch. Emily Melby. Joshua Misick. Noah Roche. Noah Robner. Natalie Sanford. Sarah Tift. Natalie Vig. Daniel Vladever. Connor Youngren. And Aaron Wells. Did I miss anyone? All right. Thank you, that's the staff that's here today.[490.93][490.93](APPLAUSE).
Mr. Editor. Mr. Editor.
Thank you very much. That's okay.
Lori Keakley would like you in the front. Oh, thank you. I know. Come on, kid, and I. Oh. This is not free roll. I don't know what to do here. Let's stay right here. Make sure your face is going to be seen, everybody. One, two. That is perfect. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Can you take the rest of these and make sure that they're all posted here? Thank you. I'll stick them in my room and then we'll be all tied tomorrow. Thank you. If you guys want to stop by, I mean, it's got a collection, though. Yes. Thank you. It's one of the best parts of this job, is the enthusiasm that our students bring to every work that they do. So, now we're to the call to order, part of our agenda, and we've got a slight modification. We're going to have Peter Hobart next time, because we were having a little technology glitch, and we wanted everybody here and at home to be able to see some of their great work that they were bringing to, with the visuals. So, we have the call to order, approval of the agenda, open forum, the superintendent's report, assessments overview, policy development first reading of policy for 12, expense reimbursement. We have the quarterly budget report, we have a contract award of federal food prime vendor bid for the national school lunch program. We have a 2013-2014 staffing, non-tenured staff report. Then we will have our consent agenda. Our action agenda includes approval of contract award of federal food prime vendor bid for national school lunch program, and award of resolution non-renewal of probationary teaching. We will then have communications and transmittals, and adjournments. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as read?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor? Aye. Carrie's 7-0. First on the agenda is open forum. Is there anybody here who wishes to speak to the school board? No one. Yeah, okay. And now, moving on, we have the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Chair Goris. I've decided to use tonight to share some good news that the school district has received recently, which I think is important for our community to know. Each year, there are several different magazines that rank the top high schools in America, the top high schools in Minnesota, and this year, once again, St. Louis Park High School has received some excellent recognition. Actually, three different items that I want to mention quickly. The Washington Post ranks top high schools in America, and this year, they ranked St. Louis Park High School as the number three rated high school in Minnesota. For reference, for those watching at home, there are 650 high schools in Minnesota, so being ranked number three is really quite an accomplishment. They use, most importantly in their ranking system, rigor, meaning how difficult are the high school classes, how well do they prepare students for what comes after high school? And in that way, St. Louis Park High School is near the top in the entire state of Minnesota. U.S. News also ranks top high schools in Minnesota, and this year, they ranked St. Louis Park High School as number seven in the state of Minnesota. Their ranking system is a little more complicated, they use a lot of different criteria, so being, again, being ranked number seven is quite an accomplishment. I noticed that we were, St. Louis Park High School was one of only three high schools in Minnesota to appear on both top 10 lists, another significant point. And then finally, we were notified last week that St. Louis Park High School is one of four high schools nationally being considered for the National College and Career Award, presented by ACT. The idea here is how well does your high school do, taking a wide variety of students and preparing them for what comes after high school, college and career success? And we will have a team from St. Louis Park High School going to Washington, D.C. the first week in June, and at that meeting, we'll find out where we rank nationally, but we know right now, we're, the high school is one of four in line for consideration for that national level award. So, some good news coming to the high school the last couple of weeks, and I just wanted to take a moment to share that.
That is great news, Rob, thank you. And thank everyone at the, both K through 12, because as you have said many times, we start, we start them young, and we blend together as we go through our whole school system to get these kinds of results at the high school, so thank everybody for that. So next up on the agenda is an assessments overview, and we're going to hear from the Director of Research and Assessment, Prachi. How do you pronounce your last name? Mukherjee. And while she's coming over to get set up, I just want to note that it's April 28th, it's a Monday. Tomorrow, April 29th, there is a primary in St. Louis Park to decide who'll be the top two people to face off in the general election for Hanipin County Commissioner. So if you live in St. Louis Park, odds are you have a place to go vote, and we'd appreciate it if you would go vote for the Hanipin County Commissioner candidate of your choice. Hanipin County is an entity that we often apply to for grants, and they have been generous with us in the past, so we support, we support them and hope that you'll get out and vote tomorrow, which is April 29th, in case you're watching this on a delay. Go ahead, Prachi.
Good evening. So I'm here to present an overview of state assessments, since we're during the, going on with the testing season right now. So if you want to follow along with the copy of the PowerPoint, there are some additional slides that I inserted that I cannot show, but I will send it along to you electronically, and if parents want copies of specific things that I'll mention, I'll be happy to make that available, too. So to start off, why do we do these flurry of assessments in the spring? So we have two sets of assessments mainly, and they are required for federal mandates. So Title I assessment comprises the bulk of our assessments, and this is a requirement for federal funding that we get for Title I programs. And Title I programs, the intent is to fund children of low-income families so that they have equal access to education, to establish high standards and accountability, as well as to close the achievement gap. So there are reading and math tests that are used in fulfillment of these federal mandates. These reading and math tests are also used to publish multiple measurement ratings. These are reports that are published by school, and the results are also used for adequate yearly progress reports, which are published by school as well as for the entire district. Students also take science tests to fulfill federal mandates. All these assessments, reading, math, and science, are aligned with the state academic standards. And every time that standards are revised, which they are required to be by state statute, a new series of assessments is developed to align with the new standards. These tests help us measure where students are with respect to the state standards, and they also help us measure growth made from one year to the next. I have a slide here which lays out by grade level, what are the tests that the students take. So this year, students in grades three through eight and 10 took the reading assessments, and this year, we had the option to administer them by paper or online. And students in grades three through eight and grade 11 took the math assessments, and we also had the option of paper or online. Starting next year, all these tests will be online. And the science assessments have always been online, and students in grades fifth and eighth take them, as well as high school students who have completed a life science course. The reading tests are aligned with the 2010 Minnesota Language Arts Standards, these are the Common Core Language Arts Standards. The math tests are aligned with 2007 standards, and the science tests are aligned with the I want to describe to you what the process of developing these tests looks like. So the first step is to align these tests to the content standards. And how this is done are through panels, Minnesota classroom teachers and content experts, and teachers are invited every year, whenever tests are being developed, teachers are invited to join these panels, and they work together to define the academic content standards. And a document is produced for every content where we have state standards, documents are available on MDE about these academic content standards. So the panels review, define the academic content standards, and they also define which content standards are going to be assessed by state tests, and which ones are better assessed at the classroom level. They also develop something called the Test Specifications Document, and the intent of this document is to guide the development of the test. There is an example from the Test Specifications Document in your slides, it's just a tiny excerpt from a bigger document. And what I have given you an excerpt of is one of the skill domains, there are four skill domains in the Language Arts Standards, there are 10 Language Arts Standards, and there are four skill domains, three of which are assessed on the state assessments. So the Test Specifications example documents what percent of items are going to address which skill domain, so that teachers have an idea of how to prepare students to be successful on those tests. The other thing that you see in your example are, is something called the depth of knowledge, and this refers to the level of cognitive complexity. It's based on the work of Webb, and the three levels of cognitive complexity that are measured by state tests are levels one, two, and three. For example, level two has to do with, it's a skill or a concept, and it demands both comprehension as well as making inferences. Level four, which is the highest level of cognitive complexity, requires strategic thinking, it requires deep thinking, investigation, and research, and for those reasons, it's best assessed in the classroom. So then going on with the test development process, once the Test Specifications Document has been developed, professional item writers start developing test items. And then there are two kinds of review panels that review these items. Minnesota educators will review it for content and alignment, and then there's a community member panel which reviews it for bias, for test item bias. And based on the recommendation of these two panels, MDE decides whether to approve an item, revise it, or reject it. This whole test development process that I outlined takes two years to complete, so it takes two years for an item to make it to an operational test. And therefore, you can understand why there's usually a delay, so last year, 2013, was the first year that we had MCA3s, measuring language arts, and the standards were adopted in 2010. So there were three years, if you will, of standards implementation before the test to measure that came into being, because of the lengthy process of the test development. We have some changes in the higher grade levels, and these are being referred to as career and college readiness tests. They used to be known as graduation-required tests, and they still are, because they are required by state statute also, as well as in fulfillment of the federal mandates. And they measure reading, math, as well as writing. And in general, the purpose is to see if students are leaving, are graduating high school ready for college and career, do they have the necessary proficiencies, necessary learning to succeed. So this has created a lot of questions, because there have been some changes, and I'm going to try and speak about it in a simplified way. So thinking about the seniors this year, all students are able to meet these graduation requirements by being proficient on the state tests that they take, in reading, math, and writing. If they are not proficient, then they have options available in order to graduate. So the seniors this year who were not proficient on state tests in reading, math, or writing, when they took it in their earlier years, they have the option to take grad retests, in which case they must obtain a passing score. There are also some alternate routes that are specified, so that, for example, in math, it might be possible for a student who did not obtain a passing score on a grad retest to take, earn enough credits in math, and qualify as meeting the requirements. Or another option is to take a series of specified tests that the state has given us, for example, ACT, and all that the student needs to do is to take the test, there is no requirement for the student to get a specific score. Now, next year, in 2014-15, again, it's similar, the seniors who were not proficient on the state tests have options to take grad retests, or take an ACT test, or we also offered in our district, we offered the Armed Forces Vocational Aptitude Battery, called the ASWAB, and it meets the requirements. The graduation requirements changed as a result of state legislation in 2013. So going forward, what will happen is that students will be taking career and college assessment tests, and I'll get to that in a little bit. So we were talking about the assessments that are given to our students in the spring, and I talked about the Title I assessments. Another set of assessments in fulfillment of federal mandates are Title III tests. And Title III funding is to meet the needs of students who are English, who are not English-language proficient, and/or immigrant children. So in return for funding, we are required to do many things, one of which is to assess the students on how well they're acquiring academic English language. And this is done by using a test called ACCESS. And I'll tell you what that stands for, Assessing Comprehension and Communication in English, State-to-State for English Language Learners. I did not write that up, but ACCESS is the name, and it's given to all K-12 English learners, and it measures four domains, reading, writing, speaking, and listening. The state, the results from ACCESS test are used to publish a report by district, and it is kind of like adequate yearly progress, only it's called Annual Measurable Achievement Objectives, and they have to do with English learners' achievement. The test assesses progress and proficiency in learning English. And if you're wondering what percent of our students are affected, it's about 11%, a little short of 500 students, K-12 are English learners in our system. So after giving all these tests, the state tests and ACCESS tests, we get a bunch of results back. And for the state tests, what we get, some of the things that we receive by student, one of the things we get is a student achievement level. So a student is given one of four achievement levels, does not meet the standards, partially meets the standards, meets the standards, or exceeds the standards. And students who meet or exceed are referred to as proficient. Students also get a scale score, they get a percentile rank, which tells us how the student performed with respect to other peers in the district, in the school, in the district, and the state. The students also get strand scores, so within the subject, there's some more detail within reading and math. We also are able to look at how various student groups are performing by using these results. And lastly, with the state test results, we can see if a student is making progress from year to year. Going over to English learners, the ACCESS results give us similar things, we get a scale score in reading, writing, listening, and speaking. We also get some composite scores in oral language, comprehension, et cetera. We get a proficiency level, and very useful for teachers, we get something called can-do descriptors. And what they do is take those proficiency levels and describe at the classroom level what the student can do, or what the student knows, in each of those four domains. So once testing is over, there is some, there are some sequence of events that happened, called post-test analysis. So the first year that a test is operational, which is going to be the case for us for grade 11 math this year, performance level expectations are going to be set. And again, multiple people are involved, working collaboratively on these tasks. There is a team that develops something called the Achievement Level Descriptors, and you might remember that Carrie Ross, Director of Teaching and Learning, talked about these. and it measures four domains, reading, writing, speaking, and listening. The state, the results from ACCESS test are used to publish a report by district and it is kind of like adequate yearly progress, only it's called annual measurable achievement objectives and they have to do with English learners' achievement. The test assesses progress and proficiency in learning English. And if you're wondering what percent of our students are affected, it's about 11%. A little short of 500 students, K-12 are English learners in our system. So after giving all these tests, the state tests and ACCESS tests, we get a bunch of results back. And for the state tests, what we get, some of the things that we receive by student, one of the things we get is a student achievement level. So a student is given one of four achievement levels. Does not meet the standards, partially meets the standards, meets the standards, or exceeds the standards. And students who meet or exceed are referred to as proficient. Students also get a scale score. They get a percentile rank which tells us how the student performed with respect to other peers in the district, in the school, in the district, and the state. The students also get strand scores. So within the subject, there's some more detail within reading and math. We also are able to look at how various student groups are performing by using these results. And lastly, with the state test results, we can see if a student is making progress from year to year. Going over to English learners, the ACCESS results give us similar things. We get a scale score in reading, writing, listening, and speaking. We also get some composite scores in oral language, comprehension, et cetera. We get a proficiency level. And very useful for teachers, we get something called can-do descriptors. And what they do is take those proficiency levels and describe at the classroom level what the student can do or what the student knows in each of those four domains. So once testing is over, there is some, there are some sequence of events that happened called post-test analysis. So the first year that a test is operational, which is going to be the case for us for grade 11 math this year, performance level expectations are going to be set. And again, multiple people are involved working collaboratively on these tasks. There is a team that develops something called the achievement level descriptors. And you might remember that Carrie Ross, Director of Teaching and Learning, talked about these. And the achievement level descriptors are basically concrete descriptions at the classroom level of what a student can do at each proficiency level. They're a well-defined set of descriptions of student skills and knowledge. So after the achievement level descriptors are developed, again, this document is available for teachers, for all of us to look at and understand what a proficiency level means. Standard-setting and stakeholder committees then look at these achievement level descriptors and the assessment content and they set what is known as cut scores to determine the level of student performance.
And just to jump in, this is after the students have already taken the test?
Yes.
Just so people understand.
Yes, thank you for that reminder. Yes, this is after testing is done.
And the ALD, that is a, like a grade level expectation?
Yes.
Okay.
By proficiency level.
And who is the team that prepares that? Is that a local team?
It is a local team. And again, teachers are invited to join the team. There are community members, business members, other stakeholders. Did I leave anyone out, Carrie? Carrie is a ready reference for MDE, all things MDE.
And that, that ALD, that is a score assessed for the student or is it just a grade level? This is what a regular student at this grade level should be?
This is what a student at a grade level should be in reading and/or math with respect to does not meet, partially meets, meets, exceeds. So I, as a teacher, if I look at that and I say, okay, where do I teach most of the time? What am I expecting my students to know? So I should be readily able to see, am I spending most of my time in the does not meet category or am I spending most of my time in the meets and exceeds category? Yes.
Who selects the team? Is that, run through Carrie? Is that?
At the state level, people apply to work on the ALD teams locally. We had the curriculum study teams work on them in, in reading and math and we added our own local version of K-1 and 2. So we have a continuum of ALDs all the way up through eighth grade.
And they take care to make sure that there is representation from different grade levels, from special education, from, you know, they want to make sure that all kinds of teachers are represented. So I have shared with you an example of grade three reading, achievement level description. So for example, I'll read it out since some people watching the television cannot see the slide. It says, "When interacting with literature and informational text, students at this achievement level demonstrate the following..." "...dot-dot-dot with a high degree of consistency and efficiency." So this description pertains to the skill domain of key ideas and details. It's one of the four domains. A student who does not meet the standards will be able to make simple predictions based on explicit text. Whereas a student who meets the standards is going to make generalizations and predictions. A student who exceeds the standards is going to use generalizations to make predictions. So you can see the progression of learning and performance as you go up the achievement Next I've shared with you, actually, I haven't shared it with you. I have, I added it and so I will make this available to you. And I won't talk about it, but it was an example of an actual question on a grade three reading test from released items. And there was a request to look at such an item, so I, I added the item. It's an example of a passage that's, that falls under informational text. Students can be asked to answer questions on literature or informational text. And there is, there are released items and the item sampler document is to be used by the teacher where an answer is provided for every question that's on the item sampler document. It also tells the teacher what the correct answer is, tells the teacher what the format of the question is, multiple choice or technology enhanced item, which is something that we see in math. It tells the teacher which skill domain is being addressed by that item. It also has a reference to the Minnesota Content Standards Document. So it will be very specific and it will mention it by strand and sub-strand, what is being measured. It will also make a reference to the depth of knowledge that, that is being measured. As well as it'll tell you what kind of a passage it is, informational text or literature, poem, drama. It'll give you the lexicon level because there's a target lexicon level which you can think of as difficulty level of a text. And it'll tell you the word count of the passage. So a lot of information is provided for every item in the item sampler to provide an example of this is what it looks like, an item that measures this standard and this strand at this cognitive level. So we'll pick up the post-test analysis. So all this is happening after testing has happened and I was talking about the ALDs. What happens is that using data from the test, committees also look at the impact of cut scores that they are considering. What will be the impact if we are considering a cut score of, let's say, 340? It, it'll be a raw score. What percent of students will be proficient? What percent of students won't be proficient? And then psychometricians at MDE have very rigorous procedures and they have very carefully defined processes that they use to establish the standards. The standards have to be approved to the commissioner, who has to approve them, for them to be adopted. And this entire post-test analysis process that goes into effect any time a new test is given delays the reporting of results. So while we would like the results to be available much more quickly, we appreciate that this being a high-stakes test that has an impact on multiple levels from students to schools to decision-makers, that a lot of care and thoughtfulness goes into what the impact is going to be of these cut scores and standard setting. Next I have a slide showing what a typical seventh grade student, how much time is a typical seventh grade student going to spend on testing? This is a seventh grade student who's not an English learner, so the student will not take an access test. They'll only take tests in reading and math. So typically, these students do not take any tests in the fall or winter. In the spring, they're going to take a reading state test, a math state test, and they'll take a couple of district-adopted standardized tests, which are NWA map, reading, and math. So this will become a total of 455 minutes. The time estimates that I have used are estimates based on how much time are, for map data, we actually get back amount of time that every student spends on the test. So the total of 455 minutes translates to about 1.3 days. And I'm assuming a six-hour day because although our days are six and a half hours, I'm subtracting 30 minutes for lunch. And when you consider that time in the context of the total number of instructional days that we have available, you'll see that it's about 1% of total instructional days that is spent on testing for a typical seventh grade student. I've also attached an example of a fifth grade English learner. So as a fifth grader, a student will take fall and winter tests in map, reading and math. And there are, there is a literacy assessment that is given to fifth grade students. And because the student is an English learner in the spring, the student is also going to take the access test, as well as lucky fifth graders get to take the science test. All of this translates into 963 minutes or about 2.75 days. Again, it's about 2% of total instructional days. And less than 1% of our population, K-12 population, is, falls in this category of a fifth grade English learner. We had this year 38 fifth grade students who fell in this category. Next I have some dates coming up. The last day that we have for online testing is for MCA science and that's May 16th. Once that is completed, there is a period from May 27th to June 13th called post-test editing where districts are able to review student enrollment data, student test data to make sure data is accurate, especially with respect to matching up, let's say, excuse me, matching up test records with student enrollment records. We get results staggered throughout summer and oftentimes, results are first available as embargoed results, which means they haven't been released to the media. And so we're not able to discuss them with the media, but we use them internally to start looking at our data and looking at how did we do compared to our goals. AYP reports are estimated to arrive in early October and MCA paper student reports are going to arrive in the district on 20th October. After which we'll be mailing them home. Any questions so far? You can see that our, all MCA tests, school and district reports don't become available until August 22nd. And the delay is because grade 11 math tests are brand-new this year to be aligned with math standards. The rest of the grade levels were aligned earlier. So finally, how do we use the results? Some of the ways in which we use results is to look at, are our students meeting the state content standards for which we are accountable? We're accountable for delivering the state content standards to all our students. We look at the results to see if our students have made a year's progress based on state tests. We can use it to look at how different groups of students are performing. We use it to see if we're closing the achievement gap. We can also use the results to see how well are our contents, how well, how well is our delivered curriculum aligned with the state content standards? And very soon, we're going to start using the results to see progress on the World's Best Workforce Plan, the goals that we set in that plan. I had been asked to provide an example of student reports that are going to be sent home and I won't be able to show those slides to you, but I have distributed a copy of descriptions of what that report contains. It's a very detailed report and what I can tell you is that it's a four-page report. It tells parents how the student is performing. It shows the whole range of achievement levels and where the particular student falls, how the student has done with respect to the school, the district, and the state. It provides a description of what the student can do based on the student's achievement And again, I can make that available or if the parents can wait, they will soon have it when we mail them home in October. Lastly, I just want to talk about how do we prepare for these tests? The best preparation for the state test is to instruct the students in the state-approved content standards. Excuse me. And in addition, the item samplers help students to become familiar with the format of the I have a quote from the Minnesota Procedures Manual for State Assessments. And it says that the best preparation for the content of the MCA is done as part of your curriculum planning. When doing that, reference the Minnesota Academic Standards and the test specifications for the MCA. Any questions? Comments?
Pachi, I had a question on the, on the, I think it was the second or third slide. It's on the testing, when it's going next, I think it was this year, it's going, it's either paper copy or electronic. And then next year, it goes all electronic?
All online.
Or all online. Is it possible to extract the, the ones that took the online test this year versus what they did last year, which was paper, correct? And just to see if there's much of a difference, if it's projected growth? Because my kids, they spend a lot of time on computers and FaceTime and things like that, but as far as taking a test in front of a computer, they just act differently. So I was just wondering if there's something there?
Yes, I can look at that. And although I will also tell you that when both formats were available in the state, paper and online, MDE couldn't do that without first making sure that neither of the formats presented an advantage to students. So they were required to analyze the data and meet federal scrutiny and review, which is usually done by peer states, to see that there was no difference between the two formats. Anything else you would want to add, Carrie, to that? But I will take a look. And you know, with the online test, for example, I'll let you know, with the math test, for example, students have the ability and they foresee a quick video to see how to do this, they're able to highlight a question and have it be read to them. So that's one of, one of the small features that's available for an online test.
Which I think is a benefit because then everybody gets the same information, no matter if they can read it or not.
Yes.
Pachi, Pachi, I understand that we get the MCA, the state MCA test results back in, basically in August roughly before the new school year starts and that we have been holding a data retreat in this district once we have those results. Could you and or Rob tell us how you use those MCA tests in the data retreat and do your planning for the, with, with teachers and schools for the next year?
Sure. We use the data, first of all, to look at how did we do on the adequate yearly progress? So how did we do with respect to meeting the proficiency targets for every student group? And then, you know, every school also sets a goal for closing the achievement gap. So they assess how did they do with respect to their goals? And every school brings a team and they get to look at their data more in-depth and dig deeper to see, for example, if math, for math proficiency, let's see, let's say they get to see, how did we do compared to last year? How did we do compared to previous years? Is the, is the achievement improving, stagnant, what's happening? And then they try to dig deeper to see, in math, if we didn't do as well, is there a particular strand in which we are weak? Is there a particular strand in which we are strong? And they also use multiple data points, so they have map data to look at, are those two converging? Are they telling us the same, same story or not? And Rob can add. What else we do? We're going to change it up this year.
Yes, we are, haven't done a lot of planning yet, but we've opened the door to doing something different at the data retreat this year, both in terms of who is invited, who is there, and what we use that time for. But it's a very valuable time to have one day late in the summer where a team from each school can gather and really dig into the data that they have and set plans for the preceding year. One of the things we do, for example, is we take some time to look at professional development. So once we know where our growth areas are, then we can decide how much time we're going to spend on certain activities in order to develop our teachers and, and use, plan out the year in terms of professional development so that we know where we need to spend our time.
And we also, besides state assessment data and standardized test data, we also look at staff survey data, student survey data, so we bring, discipline data, we bring in other data to inform, you know, give us a more complete picture.
Well, thank you, Pachi, and thank you for hanging in with your voice.
Thank you. And all of you are invited to come to the data retreat. Everybody would love that.
Thank you, I really do. We appreciate all the work you've done for us over the years here. It's been very, very helpful. Next on the agenda is policy development. It's the first reading of Policy 412: Expense Reimbursement. And we will be asked to reaffirm this policy at the May 12th School Board Meeting. This is a policy that we've had before.
And Chair Gorzavi asks Cindy to speak to this policy.
Thank you Superintendent Metz and the board. This policy was recommended to the school district in 2012 as a new policy, one of the mandated policies, and we adopted it in September of 2012. It comes up on the annual review that's recommended by MSBA for the, what they call their man- for the, what they call their mandated suggested policies, the school districts' review. So we're asking you to please look at this as a first reading. There is absolutely no changes. We adapt meeting?
Okay, then we'll move along to the next item on our agenda, which is the quarterly budget report from Sandy Selin.
Good afternoon. This is something that I provide to the board on a quarterly basis. It provides a comparison. That is a tool that we use to kind of see where our budgets are going for the year in comparison in the prior year. And basically, what this does is it compares our spending patterns to the prior year at this point in time compared to last year at this point in time. So it compares our actual spending to our budgets compared to the spending patterns of the prior year. And taking a look at this, this does include the budget amendments at this point. But it does not include the retroactive pay for the unsettled contracts, which is basically what we are in arrears for paying our salaries that are still in, have been unsettled or have not been paid yet. So taking a look at this in comparison to last year, without the retro pay, it is in comparison to what our spending patterns has been in the prior year. So without the retro pay being in there, there was some further analysis that needed to take place to determine what other issues may be existing that may be explainable. So taking a look at this, there was some vacation, excessive vacation payout that happened this year that didn't happen last year, which we are going to have to sustain. There was some, also some tuition payments that were paid earlier this year than it was in the prior year, which explains, which doesn't really add any expenses, but just explains some of the spending pattern differences. As well as some maintenance repair items that occurred this year that, earlier than last year. And utility payments were paid ahead of schedule this year in comparison to last year. We also had a, some additional expenditures that are going to be paid out of the literacy reserve of $75,000, which the board did approve at the budget amendment process. And so there are some explanations as far as what happens to the spending patterns compared to the prior year. But also, we have to remember that we did have budget amendments that were approved by the board that does provide some savings of $518,000 to our unreserved fund balance, which, you know, I think it's going to help out any situations that may exist with spending above our patterns for last year. But I think we're going to still be fine with our expenditure budgets for this current year, because we did have some savings last year that aren't reflected in this year's budget. We did bring our budgets down this year to more accurately reflect where our budgets are going to be. So I think this year is going to be fine as far as our budgets are concerned.
Anybody have any questions for Sandy? Nope, good. Thank you, Sandy. We appreciate your work. And next up, we have a contract award of federal food prime vendor bid for national school lunch program. Sandy, that's you.
Yep. And this is something that we do for our food service program. Our food service supervisor, Kathy Milbrath, gets a prime vendor contract bid, which is actually a four-year deal. We have an option to do it for a, I'm sorry, a five-year deal, where we have a prime vendor for one year with options for one-year extensions for the next four years. And this is a process that we have to meet federal guidelines in determining how to do this bidding process. And so the board has before them, basically, the criteria that we have to use in order to make sure that this follows the federal guidelines. And what we have decided to do, based on this criteria, is use Indian Head Food Service Distributor. They have a fixed fee, which is a little bit lower than the other bidder, as well as an overall total value offer bid that is slightly lower. And we did our research. Kathy Milbrath did her research as far as looking at the other districts that use this vendor. And the districts that do use this vendor are very happy with them. And there are some in our surrounding area here that actually use them. So there has been a lot of good things said about them. So that's why we're recommending that, which will be brought, that, which you have in your approval tonight, of approving Indian Head Food Service Distributor as our prime vendor contract for our food service.
Do you know who we, who do we currently have?
How is this evaluation criteria formed? Is this ours, or is this?
It's, it's based on the federal guidelines. And, you know, we have, as far as the experience and qualifications, and, you know, it's, a lot of it, some of it's judgmental as far as, you know, research on, on asking others as far as what, you know, what criteria is being met. But, but it's, for the most part, it's looking at that fixed fee and that total value that really was a deciding point as far as using this vendor instead of the others.
I see that there's nutritional value or nutritional analysis on here also. Are they equally, both vendors are equally as nutritious or non-nutritious?
Well, I don't know if it's so much, I think they have the, you know, what we have too, what we're requiring to use in our food products. It's just, they provide some reporting standards to show what their nutritional value is for their particular products.
Thank you, Sandy. Next up, we have the 2013-2014 staffing, non-tenured staff. Rob?
Last board meeting, you remember, we did non-renew a handful of probationary teachers. There are two new names we need to add to the list at this meeting.
So we'll get to that on the action agenda, then.
And then why, what got us to the extra two? Both were unique situations. Rachel Horst, who's on this list, is a long-term sub at Peter Hobart. And we made the determination that we just need, for technical reasons, to non-renew her. Her long-term sub position is just going to last this year. She's filling in for a teacher who's on a leave, and that teacher's coming back. And Jacob Utides is a business teacher at the high school. He will more than likely be hired right back this spring. But for scheduling reasons, we need to be safe and make sure that we non-renew him. And once we know the schedule and how many business classes we'll have, we'll be able to bring him back. Thank you.
Anyone else? Then we will move on to our consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? It was by, Jim, is there a second? Second by Karen? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Abstained? And then next, we are up to our action agenda. And the first item on the action agenda is approval of the contract award of federal food prime vendor bid for national school lunch program. It is recommended that the school board approve the contract award of federal food prime vendor bid as presented. And that was Indian Food Service Distributor. Is there a motion? It was moved by Ken, second. Second by Joe. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye? Opposed? Abstained? Carrie, 7-0. Next on the agenda is approval of resolution of non-renewal of probationary teaching contracts. It is recommended that the school board approve waiving the reading of the resolution relating to the non-renewal of teaching contracts.
I would second that. The motion is to waive the reading? Yeah.
Moved by Jim and seconded by Julie. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye? Opposed? Abstained? Carrie, 7-0. It is recommended that the school board approve the resolution relating to the non-renewal of teaching contracts of Rachel Horst and Jacob Utides Utides as probationary teachers as non-renewal for 2014-2015. Is there a motion?
Second.
So that was moved by Bruce and seconded by Julie. Is there any discussion? All right, it's a roll-call vote.
Richardson?
Aye.
Tatalovich, aye. Switzer?
Aye.
Gors?
Aye.
Morrison?
Aye.
Yarosh?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
I have a 7-0 vote.
Thank you. Motion carries 7-0. And now we are up to communications and transmittals. Do we have any? We'll start with Karen.
I'd like to talk about Children First Asset 14 adult role models. We are going to have a whole bunch of them here in the high school on Wednesday for the career day, which I'm really excited to be part of this year. I want to mention that Lisa Green and other people from the Community Education Advisory Committee are meeting with the St. Louis Park City Council and Mayor Jeff Jacobs this evening to talk about that joint commission that we do. And finally, we have a great program in our community called Dollars for Scholars. A bunch of neighborhoods did receive this information. They're down about 50% on contributions. So it would be great if people who got this delivered by high school kids, even five bucks would be great. All the money adds up. Last year, $75,000 in scholarships were awarded to our graduating seniors. 95 scholarships were created from neighborhoods, families, individuals, memorials, businesses, teachers and staff, graduating classes, retired faculty, sports associations, community associations. So this is a, Dollars for Scholars is a widespread way to support lifelong learning in our community. And I also want to thank the people from our community who have been advocating for this. Tommy McKenna was the chair, Tammy McKenna, excuse me. Cheryl Brody, Carol Clay, Carrie Conroy, Beth Cork, Dan Fader, Joanne Keratoff, Andy Larson, Barb Nelson, Nancy Ostrom, Renee Redka, Jody Rognes, Jim Romlin, Judy Romlin, Dave Roder, Sue Roder, Jerry Rotman, Lou Rotman, Sylvia Timian, and Diane Vig. All of these people volunteered to work on this program to the benefit of our students. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Karen.
I have a one. And Bruce, usually you do this one. We have a musical coming up on May 15th, 16th, and 17th, 18th for the middle school. And they are doing Horton, Here's a Who. And my daughter's in it, so I've been hearing a lot of the musical stuff. So you should go out and enjoy it.
I have two things. Number one is, we need you to call the governor. For those out there in television land, our state this year has a $2 billion surplus. This is not a funding year. However, when the state has this big a surplus and the governor recommends $3 million for E-12 education, the House recommends $58 million, which is less than 1%. And the Senate recommends something in between the two that is not enough money for our schools. And this is really important. The conference committee is going on right now. It is very important for people out there who support our public schools to get on the phone, specifically call the governor's office and say, "We need more money for our schools." And then call your friendly senator. And, and again, Ron's a great supporter of ours. Senator Ron Lattz is a great supporter. "We need more money for our schools." And the funding level, last year, we got a nice increase. We're very grateful for that. However, that only takes us up to the year 2003 with all the cuts we experienced over the eight years. And so now, it's making up that difference. We realize that's difficult to do. We've been through some tough funding years. But right now, with a $2 billion surplus, for Governor Dayton to be our educational governor, we need him to step up and do more. So I'm urging everyone to get out, organize as many people as you can, and call the governor's office and say, "We need way more than $3 million to support our schools." 1% is about $78 million. And that's, in a $2 billion surplus, that's not a lot of money. Second thing is, our community always steps up every year and gives to St. Louis Park Public Schools Foundation. We're grateful for that. In this room, about a week ago, present company included, LeAnn Stevens and her crew stood up and showed what they did with the funding they get from the foundation. If you sat through that and see what our teachers do, again, there are grants given for $10,000. The, the foundation gives away about $40,000 per year. And we've been doing that for over 10 years now. So we've given over half a million dollars. We have a fund that's now put together where it's almost in perpetuity. We haven't raised our $1 million that Jerry, Timmy, and I set out to raise, but we're getting, getting closer. But what I highly recommend is everybody step up. We're going to ask the governor for more money. We also ask the community to step up and give to the St. Louis Park Public Schools Foundation. It supports our teachers. It's fun to see the $10,000 grants and what they do with the money. But it's really fun to see with a math teacher with a couple of hundred dollars, what that teacher did with these things that you can move around, I forget what they're called. But anyhow, it's just incredible things. And when you see our kids' scores going up with a few hundred dollars worth of grant, it is fabulous stuff. I'm grateful to the foundation, and I'm really grateful to the teachers to see what they do with that money.
I have three things. I apologize. So the first thing, I want to reiterate what Nancy said to vote tomorrow, Tuesday, April 29th, in the primary for Hennepin County Commissioner. And for those political junkies like myself, you can vote two weeks later as well in the general election on Tuesday, May 13th. So a reminder to do, to do that twice. Secondly, Nancy and I were at a listening session on Saturday, April 26th, at PSI at 10:30. No one showed up. But we certainly want your feedback in any sort of forum you can give it to us. Earlier, we heard from the high school students. The hotline number for the school board, if you want to reach us, is 952-928-6040. So you can call us, and we will return, return your message. All of our emails are on the, on the website, slpschools.org. You can go to the School Board tab at the top, and you can see a list of all of us and all of our email addresses. So I encourage you to contact us if you have any questions or comments about the schools or the school district. The third thing, and I wanted to say this to Shelley and Kelsey when they were here for the Peter Hobart School Report, but I'll say it now because, you know, the last couple months at work have been very tough for me. And then the last week was extremely tough. This is going somewhere, so don't worry about it. So on Friday, it was about 65 degrees and sunny, and it was 6:15, and I was still at work. And I said, "Oh yeah, I've got to get to the Peter Hobart Imagination Fair." So I left work, and I'd been beaten down by work. And I get there, and I interview five students about their projects. And I got, and I left, and I was so pumped up again. I was, so it's just incredible every year to watch and listen to what, to what projects they do. I saw history projects, I saw art projects, you know, for engineers, current and former. I saw two projects on I saw two projects on circuits. I was very impressed, impressed by those. So it's just a great, a great forum. All the, all the schools do something, something like it, so I encourage you to go whenever you get a chance. It's so, to me, it's so exhilarating to see, see the kids do their project and how passionate they are about, about the item, the, the thing that they chose, so.
I meant to say this when the, when the Echo staff was here, they're, the online Echo paper is indeed online, and so if you, if you go to the school district site, and then you go to the high school site, and then you follow along and find the dropdown for activities, you'll find the Echo dropdown, and if you click on that, you'll get yourself to the Echo online paper, and it's really a treat to see. They do just a great job, both in print and online. And so we'll sort of close with a, we opened with the Echo, we'll close with the Echo, and we'll see what they print tomorrow. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Second by Karen. All in favor?
Aye.